Noon, it's three o'clock on Tuesday afternoon, May twenty first, two thousand twenty four. I call this meeting of the Beltrami County Board of Commissioners work session to order. Is there any new employees to be introduced? Seeing none, does anyone have any future work meeting topics that they would like to bring up?
Mister Chair.
Yes.
I know a few meetings ago, I asked Tom if he can schedule a update from the uh, the lobbyists. Um, just wanna uh put a reminder out there to to Tom.
Okay.
What, you know, what the.
Good suggestion, Tim. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. No one else? Then let's move on to local mental health services. And I believe that is Jeff. And company. And now. Alright. Which button?
There we go. We all know my technology and how I'm, how I'm with technology, so it needs to be simple.
I'm not like you, otherwise you would have turned me around.
Should make it so it's shocking if people.
It would have been backwards, yeah. Uh, I'm Jeff Lynn, I'm the Social Services Division Director for Beltrami County Health and Human Services. We're gonna be presenting to you today on, on the state of our, of some of our local mental health services and programs and some of the gains we've made over the past ten years or so. Um, I will let everybody introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Ashley McMartin. I'm one of the directors of Behavioral Health at Sanford.
And Chair of Jason Bings.
Alright, we've been talking to you for years about the challenges that we, that we have been experiencing with our mental health continuum of care here in, in Bemidji, in Beltrami County and statewide. Regionally, we still have all, we still have some of those same problems. Uh, we've talked to you about the lack of available placements. We've talked to you about how the jails and prisons have been the unofficial inpatient facility for way too many individuals. And we've talked about the emergency department and the challenges that they are experiencing with utilization. I'm sure that Ashley will be able to talk about kind of how often and what the, what the percentages are of people that come to the emergency room that, that may be experiencing some form of mental health or S U D challenges. Um, and then we've talked about the challenges that we are all experiencing when it comes to finding and retaining staff. Is I gonna take this one or are we, because really what we, what's been happening, what, what's happening prior to two thousand sixteen was revolving door. We had, we would have people in the community that would commit a crime oftentimes when they were having challenges either with chemical use or with mental health, experiencing mental health breakdowns or challenges. And because they're committing a crime, they go to jail. Well, they get to jail and they're, they're still experiencing their mental health challenges and they would get brought to the emergency department. Emergency, emergency department would, would clear them and then they'd have to go back to the jail. And then they'd go from the jail back to the emergency department. Eventually they come back to the community. And then once from the community, they may end up in the emergency department first and then back to jail and round and round of wins. Um, and we were doing this, we were doing this for years. Uh, and it was not serving um, our facilities correctly. It was not serving our clients correctly. Or our inmates or, and we've been keeping tabs on our mental health numbers since approximately twenty twelve. And if you go back to that date, uh, in late twenty twelve, early twenty thirteen, you started, you, we started seeing an exponential rise in the number of inmates moving forward each individual year. Um, and in uh, twenty twenty, we had the pandemic, twenty twenty one was coming down from the pandemic. We saw those numbers reach levels of forty five percent of our inmates that were suffering from some significant mental illness where they would be pla, being placed on a suicide watch. Uh, those numbers are average right now in the thirty percentile. So about one third of our, our inmates that are coming into the jail are suffering from some form of mental health crisis. Um, I was talking with uh, former Commissioner Reed Olson uh, at the groundbreaking ceremony at uh, the women's shelter. And he was saying that at the Wolf Center, which is community, they're seeing also about those same numbers, um, about sixty percent with significant mental health illnesses. And if you added substance use disorders, you're looking at close to a hundred percent of the population.
I think some of the numbers that um Rick shared around what's seen in the jail is reflective of um, the hospital setting as well. The E D ends up as similar to the jail as kind of default for boarding of patients um, with mental health needs when there aren't beds to be um, placed to. Um, and then I also have the luxury of working with our community-based services. And again, the, the well-being of our jail and our hospital is often a well-being reflection of our community. And so those mental health needs are high within our community um, as well. And so we're painting a little bit of the backdrop, not to be like the Debbie Downers, but to, to give an accurate description or picture of kind of where it was at. And not that we're gonna tell you how we don't have any mental health needs within our community, but really kind of turning the page to what changed. And so uh, the next slide really lays out the big players that came forward around twenty sixteen. Um, we saw this idea of um, community members really being pushed from organization to organization and kind of being like, okay, well, they're in uh, Jason's, Jason's place now. Like, I don't have to worry about him at the hospital. And then Jason's like, well, we, you know, they got released and now they're in the community. So now Jeff's team is trying to manage them. And so luckily, there was a core group of people that sat down and said, we have to stop doing this. This is ineffective. We're functioning as silos and it's not working and our community is not getting any healthier because of it. So really, uh, the starting point was when Paul Nissler, at the time, uh, we were Upper Mississippi Mental Health Center, uh, was at the table. Joy Johnson was the V P for Sanford Health at the time. And then we see some names that are probably from, very familiar to this group. We had Phil Hodaf as Sheriff, K Mack as County Administrator and Becky Seacor um, at leading the Health and Human Services Division. So really, they started sitting down and meeting. And um, and it wasn't by happen chance. We really got lucky within our community where many of these individuals actually served on each other's boards. And there was an investment in other organizations and the community doing well. And not to say that we're not all invested in that, but when you're on a board and you're getting to see everything play out from that viewpoint and vantage point, you learn a lot more about how an organization operates and you are invested in the well-being of that organization. And so at the time, um, I believe that Becky was on Upper Mississippi's board. Um, Ernie, who replaced Phil in this group, was a part of Upper Miss, Mississippi's board. And uh, K Mac was part of Sanford. So there is this really intimate connection between these individuals that made this uh, relationship happen to start to turn the page to what integrated and collaborative behavioral health services could look like.
Right. And part of the reason that that, that triangle was sitting there is because everyone was saying, it's not my issue. The jail was saying they have mental health issues. We're gonna, we can't deal with it. We'll bring them to the emergency. And then the emergency room would be saying, well, we're not dealing with mental health issues. They're criminals. They should go back to the jail. So it was bouncing from place to place. And frankly, there was a lot of angst between uh, uh, I, I was, I was a part of some of the meetings at that time, um, but the Sheriff's Department and the Police Department um, were frustrated with Sanford and the emergency room. And the emergency room and Sanford were frustrated with law enforcement response. There was, there was Sanford, well, you, you have, you have your own security force. You can, you can deal with a lot of these things on your own. But, but yet that the challenge was that no one really was able to come together at the, until this to look at an issue and say, okay, we gotta stop saying it's somebody else's issue because it's all of our issues. Um, and a lot of time was spent, there were several, there were a lot of meetings and a lot of discussions and some of them, there was like I said, some of them, I won't say they got heated, but I'll say that they were, were not the most comfortable of meetings at times. And like these two were talking about, this information was siloed amongst the three different entities. And at that particular time, I was a sergeant working for the sheriff's office. And I can tell you firsthand, there was, there was a lot of back and forth between Sanford and the Field Operations Program, the sheriff's officer, and, and likewise with the police department. It's just when you're trying to go from call to call to call and do the next thing in line, there was a, there was a, a funnel or a, a, you know, a stop that was jamming up the whole system. And that was what we thought was Sanford. When, in, in that case, Sanford wasn't prepared for those services. As far as the, as far as the emergency room, wh, which we would operate. Right. And at that time Sanford was the hospital. It wasn't Upper Mississippi Mental Health Center. It was a hospital. We, we deal with medical issues. Um, and we all, we, for years, we talked about how mental health is a medical issue and it should be seen as such. But let's face it, it's still not happening. Even ten years later, it's still not happening to the extent it should be. So, so we did sit down and, and we started talking through some of these issues. This is about, this was really at the time that Upper Mississippi and, and Sanford uh, became one. Um, I think I'm gonna, I'm gonna let Ashley talk a little bit about the next several years because really Sanford, um, at the urging of, of the Sheriff's Department, at the urging of, of Health and Human Services and at the need, as the need of the community continued to rise, um, Sanford was able, and we need to talk also, I want to mention that we have Sanford here talking with us now, right? Ashley's here with us here. But there are a lot of different entities in our community that are, have all been a part of these issues and discussions. Um, I wrote down, I, I want to make sure I don't forget, so I wrote it down and I, I kind of, I'll mention it now and I'll probably mention it again later. But some of the, some of the entities that have been involved in one way or another throughout this whole process are, are, are local schools and the services that are being provided there. Um, Northwest General Center, uh, Bemidji Area Program for Recovery, um, Stellar Human Services, uh, BAPR or Bemidji Area Program Recovery and Stellar are now one entity. Uh, North Homes, Lake Country Associates, BASK, uh, Beltrami Area Service Collaborative. Um, and a lot, our local group homes have all played a part. So there's been a lot. We're here talking about things, these, these huge things that have happened that we wanted to make sure that the board is aware of, but there's a lot of smaller things that many agencies have taken part in and helped build in our community. So I don't want this just to be about about Sanford and Beltrami County. It really should be about the entire continuum of care that has been, has been actively worked on for ten years.
I appreciate that, Jeff. And especially, I think Sanford just has the, the the piece of being the large, you know, large medical provider in the region. And so, um, if someone else was in that role, I would imagine that they're, they would be standing up here with these two individuals as well because of that really um, complex system that we're talking about of how to get people the care that they need when they need it. So um, so really we saw the coming together of Beltrami County in many capacities. So Health and Human Services, the jail um, and Sanford as the medical center, and then also with um, like the mobile crisis team and additional um, ancillary behavioral health services came together and really some of the key, I guess, dates or achievements to consider on the group that's on the left there. Um, so in twenty sixteen, uh, law changed for uh, the Sheriff's Department. They no longer were required to provide mental health transport for higher levels of care for individuals that needed placement outside of the community. So before that, Jason would be assigned to go pick someone up at the E R and drive them four hours down to the cities, take someone off the road that we really needed and then drive back. So you're either paying overtime or you're down a, down a person, right? Um, so in twenty sixteen, uh, the Sheriff's Department approached Upper Miss and said, would you guys be willing to take on mental health transport? And so that was, I feel like one of the very first things where we started partnering. We were Upper Miss at the time. And the Sheriff's Department said, we'll provide the vehicles that we retire and we'll run it through dispatch to make sure you guys are safe. Can you guys take on the rest? And so that's what really started things off. Um, and we continue to do that today. Uh, in twenty sixteen, with, I believe, startup funds that ran through the county, um, we started an assertive community treatment team that specializes in working with um, adults with uh, significant mental health issues. Twenty seventeen, um, we saw Park Place come in and bring supportive housing options for individuals with chronic substance use disorders, which we know um, remove some of the pressure on the jail if people are safely housed. Um, we also see that the Wolf and the Day Center have um, been up and going now for years. And that creates warm, safe, stable places for individuals with um, co-occurring disorders. Uh, we see the pressure taken off the emergency room as well with those uh, options for people. In twenty seventeen, uh, Sanford and Upper Miss merged. And then in twenty nineteen, again, I believe with some pass-through dollars from the county, um, Prime West Insurance donated their building over on Hannah Avenue. Um, and then pass-through dollars from the county, uh, there was a renovation of that building to bring on residential services for mental health for adults. So that was kind of the early big wins for our region as it related to that collaboration starting. We moved into, like, you can see twenty twenty's not on there. We had like COVID where everything stopped. Um, but then we've seen kind of the evolution of that group. Um, the, if you want to go back one slide, Jeff. So it originally started as kind of the picture on the left. And as we have gotten a foundation of collaboration in place, uh, the group has really grown to include other organizations and agencies like Jeff had mentioned, which allows that collaboration, kind of that idea of let's work smarter and not harder. We don't all have to do the same thing, but let's work together in how it's done. So we can be more efficient and effective in it. And so we've had luck growing that table, which is pretty exciting. Um, and which has led to, if you flip to the next one, some of these things that we've seen evolve over the last couple of years. You want to talk about the change in on twenty one?
Yeah. So if you see twenty twenty one there, you'll notice that uh, the use of force law changed for law enforcement officers. And that was post George Floyd, post Orlando Castillo, post some of these in custody deaths that had occurred. And Minnesota Postboard and Legislature started directing some of the things that we couldn't do anymore. And when it came to the mental health side of it, we were kind of given this, you know, prior to this timeframe, we were like, through the front door, you don't have a choice. You're gonna go to the hospital. And then, and, and that's what, you know, the frontline mental health workers wanted us to have, was that type of relationship with them. Well, then they come out with a law that says we can't force this issue anymore. Uh, and with having the in custody deaths that we've seen, no law enforcement officer wanted to be held civilly or criminally liable for forcing someone into, you know, custody per se. And so initially, we threw up our hands and said, okay, we're no longer going unless they're a threat to somebody else. If they're just a threat to themselves, we're not, we're, we're stepping back. We're not gonna go in and, and put ourselves in a, a position to have to, to hurt somebody or get one of our, one, one of our own officers hurt.
And that put a real pinch on our community-based services who might be called by law enforcement to go in and do an assessment with the crisis team or um, a concerned family member might reach out or someone themselves, but they're alone and they're high risk and they're living fifteen miles out of town on a dirt road where there are no lights. And we have, you know, frontline, um, young people new to the behavioral health field going out to meet with individuals in their homes. And so when the Sheriff's Department was like, we're not doing it anymore, really, we had to be like, we need you to, because we can't go without you going.
And had, and had it not been for the relationship that had been ongoing now for approximately, what, three or four years with online in front staff workers, that might have fell to the wayside, but.
And so then we just designed kind of a new way of approaching it so that they can be involved in a lot less um, forward-facing role and our staff can still feel safe. Um, I always use the example, uh, usually we set up a a call system. If I'm going out, I'm, I'm, you know, calling the Sheriff's Department or the Police Department and they're assigning an officer to me and uh, we are communicating on how often I'm gonna check in. And uh, there's been times where I've missed a check-in and there's been a knock on the door. And at first I was like, oh my gosh, what's going on? And then I realized they've got my back. And there's a, there's a safety in that and there's a trust and importance when you're dealing with unpredictable mental health needs. That's really important to do good work in the community for our community members.
And then in twenty twenty two, uh, we developed the reset program, which you guys are, are well aware of. Um, we didn't think of it as a mental health program. We thought of it as a reintegration program from jail to the, to the community. Well, it turns out a lot of people that are in jail still have mental health issues. So she ends up, she ends up spending a lot of her time um, helping people connect with services, whether they be for S U D services, that substance use for everybody who doesn't know that. Um, and mental health services. So she spends a majority of her time working through these same issues. So although it wasn't designed to be a mental health program, it is.
In twenty twenty three, uh, we saw a lot of different grant opportunities drop in Beltrami County and you guys remember how much? Some millions of dollars. Uh, again, pass-through dollars for bricks and mortar from the states. And it was, uh, it was really sitting down and talking about where are gaps? We saw, again, continued ongoing boarding in the emergency room. Um, sometimes law enforcement didn't have any other place besides the emergency room to bring people. Um, so really creating a space that focused on safety, security and stabilization in a less sterile environment. And so that's where the idea of the Crisis Center was really kind of born out of. And that opened in twenty twenty three with eight adult inpatient beds. And then the first in the state, um, Empath for Adult Children and Families. Empath is an emergency psychiatric assessment, treatment and healing unit. And so the approach is much, much more, much different than your traditional emergency room setting. Um, it's very communal and it's not an overnight stay. It's, and we count it as chairs. Um, because you have to be able to quantify how many people are in the building. So for adults, we have um, five chairs that are available. For kids, we have three. And then we have um, the only family unit in the state. And that was a result of seeing um, a lot of postpartum moms in the emergency room setting who didn't want to be separated from and have um a broken attachment to babies. And then also seeing uh, younger and younger kids in the Crisis Avenue uh, where really they can't be alone in the unit. Uh, and then also on the flip side, having supportive people come to be present with adults that were receiving care for us as well. Twenty three also saw the uh, opening and the certification for C C V H C through the state for um, our mental health division within Sanford. So it brought on things like care coordination, which if you've ever tried to navigate the mental health system, it is extremely tedious and difficult and so many hoops to jump through. So people now, when they call in to receive services, receive a care coordinator who helped them navigate those different steps. Whether it's connection to the county or transportation or some other service that they might benefit from, they have one person they can call and go to. Um, and the other piece that we brought online in twenty twenty three was our use of sort of community treatments. So just like the adult version that started years before, I think in twenty sixteen, we brought in services for the kid's side of the house as well.
As of today, well, also let's go back, as of last Friday, our current medical provider, Welltown, for our jail inmates, could no longer provide mental health services. Uh, we have been in the process of talking with Sanford for a few years now with regards to our Ember Program and what kind of services that's gonna provide. We've been meeting uh, quite frequently and then as of late, it's been uh, weekly. Um, contracts are, you know, depending on, they're in Sanford's hands now with uh, their legal department. Uh, but as of today, we are getting mental health services from Sanford. It was a full contract.
No, because of the gap, stopgap.
Yeah. So they are providing services as of today to get our folks in the jail off of mental health laws. So I don't think with all those relationships, we would have had that ability to do that. Um, looking ahead, uh, we, we still have a ways to go. Medications for opioid use disorder in the jail uh, may be able to be provided um, in the near future. Part of that has to do with the eleven fifteen waiver. The eleven fifteen waiver is an opportunity um, through Medicaid services. The state has to, has to request the waiver and I believe they have. Um, and they have to request the waiver in order to be able to provide certain medical services, opioid uses or disorder, um, services being one of them in the jail and have paid for through M A. Uh, we all know that up until now, their M A services can't be provided within the jail. Um, opiate, we have some possibilities for opioid settlement, which I think you guys have been made aware of and have been a part of the process. Um, then an increased awareness and support for our mental health services. I think one of the things I really want to, I want to talk briefly about is the I think one of the things I really want to, I want to talk briefly about is the collaboration. We are a community and you guys have probably heard me say this before. We are a community that is dealing with big city problems. And we are still a smaller community. We still, we have a great, a large. Portion of our population that are living in poverty. We have a large portion of our population that are experiencing challenges with mental health and S U D. One of the, one of the things about that is being the size we are. The only way that we can make sure that we're providing the services is to work together. And it has been pleasure as a, as the social services director, division director over the past 15 years now. To be a part of assisting anyhow and bringing some of these collaborations together. It's allowed for a lot of these things to happen. We would not be where we are. Unless we had people that sat around the table, but really wanted to problem solve. They wanted to look at what is the issue and stop saying it's your problem, not mine. And, and we've, we've done a good job as a community and we've always been that long before I. Long before I became a, a manager in, in the county, we were collaborating. It's been the, the core of the work that we have done for as long as I've been around. And I've been here for about 32 years. 30 years with this county and two years prior to that in another county. So I've been around for a long time and I've seen that, that collaboration at every level. And part of this because there's not, it's not like there's not enough work to go on, right? Then if you're, if you take my client here, then who's, there's not a problem having another one fill in behind. Challenge now is I think staff and that's, that's one of the issues there. You want to go over?
The last couple of slides, we just, you know, to Jeff's point about the collaboration and then just wanted to field any questions that. Guys might have.
Richard?
One of the. One of the committees that I value, having been here for 12, 13 years, is this particular committee. Because I did see it at that disjointed stage, but good people working together. I have done some tremendous things. We're so much better off today than we were 12 years ago. And that doesn't happen just by mistake. It's sometimes it's working through your own. Companies or your own businesses, working at the base and then bringing those questions and concerns out. So that it can be shared concerns. And so I, I really wanted to hear and, and I did hear that there were troubles. But you know what? Through troubles, we can get success if we work together. So. Thank you very much for all this happening and I'm sure that bigger things are going to even come around the corner.
I, I had a question on the new crisis center. And I, on like a daily basis, is that, is there always someone there or is it sometimes vacant?
Great question. So on the one side, we have inpatient hospital beds. And so probably for the last three months, our average daily census has hovered right around seven. We have eight beds. So just with bed turnover, you can't really average eight. So that side of the house stays relatively full, which means eight community members are not going outside of our community. I think one of the biggest things I've heard over the years that I've been doing the work is, you know, how dehumanizing it is. To remove someone from their community, which they're going to heal in, we heal in community. And, and go six hours away or go three hours away. And then catch a bus on the ride home and get dropped off at the, I think at the gas station changed names now. And that's how they reintegrated back into the community was catching a bus back to Bemidji. And so that idea that families can come visit and we can support from the ground floor. On that side of the house. So that's the adults that we serve on that side. And then the. The empath side of the house, when I checked last and it's been a, it's been probably a month or two. So don't quote me exactly. We're averaging between six and eight patients. Both that's combined for adult and children. We, we definitely see more adults, just because regionally we serve adults in the surrounding counties as well. Where we just serve Beltrami County for kids. So.
Yeah.
Just had one question. When you mentioned the reintegration piece, is there any, any thought or plan or anything with regard to. The reset program and expanding that to being more than just Amanda or any possibilities there? She's doing such great, great work.
We would love to do that. We have, we have so many, we have so many staffing needs, so many challenges that we need to try and continue working through. I think one of the areas that I'd really like to see is, yes, I'd like to see another staff person. I would like that staff person to be able to be more inward facing. So they're working with the individuals in the jail. Right now Amanda's doing both. Which takes away from her ability to do the outward facing work. So I think if we want to take the next step with the reset program. We're going to want to look at another staff person and one that's able to look inward. And, and be able to address the needs of people kind of just before they're getting released. And then, and then as they're getting released, they, being able to move that forward with, with our, probably Amanda. I, I'm not sure what if she, what side of this, not sure what side of the building she'd be on. But we, we'd love to continue expanding. One of the things, Commissioner. With the Ember program. With that comes a couple of navigators that are going to be kind of like Amanda in the sense of setting up. Appointments and doing sort of those things. So that might take some of the load off Amanda's inward plate. When it comes to setting up services for mental health, that, that might be part of that, that component as well.
Hey, just that Amanda, you know, been so successful beyond what our expectations were. So, you know, that you always want to see those kinds of things expanded upon.
I can speak towards too. So the RFQ jail. Came out probably two years ago when Sanford applied. And one of the kind of rationales behind that was. The transition from in jail services to out of jail services. Really, if we think about the barriers that are already present for inmates being released. To have to then try to set services up at a brand new organization, it's nearly impossible, right? Like I don't have a phone. I don't have transportation. How am I going to follow up with this recommendation to go to this other provider that I've never been to? And so the goal was really to create, if the inmate chooses a seamless transition point of. We, we did your assessment in the jail. We've got you connected with a care coordinator, which I mentioned earlier. Helps you get connected with the other services. Sanford provides transportation to mental health patients up to 25 miles within Bemidji. And so really trying to eliminate some of those barriers that would make transition out back into the community difficult. And then anchoring them to some of the services that might be same day services that we have like M path. So if, if, you know, scheduling an appointment two weeks away and trying to figure out transportation is too difficult. Like walk out of jail and catch a ride to the empath. And let's figure out that day, what we can support and do for you to figure out how tomorrow can be a little bit easier. And take it in bites instead of trying to think really long term.
The other challenge right now with just having one person in the reset program is. She's really not able to spend the kind of time she would like with those people who are housed out of Beltrami. Cause they maybe needed more than anybody because they're going to come back, right? But she's not able to devote a whole lot of time to that because she is so involved in the stuff she's doing right here. And again, another staff person, even with, even with the Ember program and some of the, the gains we hope to get from that. Being able to have another person that's able, that would allow. Program to expand to Beltrami County residents that are not here in our jail. And we all hope that a few years that's, that will change because we'll have a different jail. But for now, it, it still continues to be a, a very, very real need.
Tim, oh, Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So one of your slides had something about the opioid settlement. And I think a few months ago. I was part of the opioid settlement committee and I know that we've had a. And I think that's the great thing about committees and committee assignments, you know, you get to learn, you get to learn about. You know, what, what our. Programs are doing, our departments are doing, you know, what our staff are doing. But part of that discussion during the opioid committee meetings. We were having some discussions about Amanda and her position and possibly expanding. That, that department, correct? So the, the county did allocate some dollars to help expand the, the reset program. To, to help her out, to get into the community, to, to kind of. Create another, you know, position to, to help her. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Part, part of that was to, because of course the challenges with funding any program. Part of it was to, to maintain what we're doing. Part of it was to allow for increased. Under that program, we don't, don't have a flexible fund to deal with people's real needs as they're leaving. So part of it was put, put to create a fund that allowed. Of the, to allow Amanda to be able to access for the people that are leaving to, to help them reiterate. So there's a couple pieces there and, and. In order for us to. A likely scenario for us to actually add a whole number of person to build that program. We would have taken a lot of the resources. And as it was, we were able to. Maybe he's not here right now, but Amy, we, we looked at about a hundred and forty thousand dollars being allocated out. And there's five different, just for that, for what it's worth, there's five different agencies that are accessing the program.
Thank you. I only ask that question because I just want to remind, you know, folks that, you know, the, the county and the county board, you know. Are, are trying to help, you know, expand, you know, the reset and, and. Offer, you know, our, our support in any, in a way that we can. So as a reminder, thank you.
Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Really good information. Appreciate the history. And I recognize that there was, you know, some struggles, bumps in the road to get here. And, you know, that's one of the best ways to learn as Commissioner Anderson mentioned is, is from. You know, and I don't want to say mistakes, but just, you know, this is, this has been an ever evolving. Public policy area. There's been more and more needs over the years. This, this is why I'm here, you know. I, I want to see us do more every year. And, and so what I'm most interested in is just, you know, knowing where we're at. And I feel like I've got a pretty good handle on that from the information that you and Ann and Amy and everybody's provided. My time on the board here. But what I'm most interested in is, is where we can expand, how we can do better. We've talked a little bit about that today, so I appreciate that conversation. I'm going to be on the lookout for opportunities to do that. But I'm wondering if you feel like we are leveraging state dollars, county dollars. To the best possible way right now. And, and if there was an area of improvement that. You know, could definitely use a boost, where would you say that would be?
Okay. Yeah. I, I think. We're, we're still probably the biggest challenges we have are, are those individuals who. Are our most challenged, are, are most vulnerable people. They're the ones that we don't have places for. We, we do a really good job, I think, of, of turning over every stone and figuring out. How we can, how we can meet the needs of individuals in our community. But sometimes. As an adult, people can get a choice. They can choose to live the way they want to. And it may not be the way I would want someone to live. It may not be the way you guys want them to live. But anytime we, we, we move forward with court action on those individuals, you end up taking certain rights away. And we still have to do that. We, but we really try and exhaust everything we can. And I think one of the benefits of having this team working together over the years. Is we have been able to leverage certain things. There have been opportunities that have arisen. Where the state says, we, we want, we want a program built and, and we want it done. But you know, we want plans in place by X time. And sometimes communities that don't, aren't already working together. Have not had the ability to put together those plans and come forward. I think that's where one of the, one of the buildings came from. It was, you know, a grant dropped and we actually had a plan in place. And it was pretty easy for us to make some adjustments or for really the Sanford that made the adjustments and moved that forward. And that's where, that's where the empath and crisis building came from. It wouldn't have happened had we not been unofficially planning for the future. So I think, I think we're still working on that. There, there continue to be new monies brought forward and dropped by the state. And, and we as a county have been active at the state level, trying to find out where things are at. One of them is the 1115 waiver that we talked about briefly. They'll be looking for some pilot projects for that. And did a nice job this year presenting, testifying to the, was that the senate or the? House, senate, yeah. And about the mental health needs that we have. And obviously we, we didn't get those funds, but that is what it is, you know. From a perspective of the state, you know, St. Peter in Milka, when he said there are so. You know, our commitments to get people who are competent. Ends up taking much longer than you should by, by statute. And unfortunately, those people spend that time in our, in our jail facility. Where they are not getting the significant mental health treatment that they need.
And, and I guess I just want to make sure that the community knows that this. Consortium or in this committee is still meeting on a regular basis. It's not like it's said and done. It's an ongoing process and it can be Sanford bringing forth an idea or it could be the district or the sheriff's department. But it's, it's a committee that's ongoing.
And, and we're actually expanding a little bit and then now we, initially it was really about adult challenges and adult issues. We're really trying, trying to expand into some of the challenges that our youth are, are experiencing as well. And, and Sanford, you know, this last year, opening up the youth act team, I think it's one of the third one in the state, maybe?
First that serves the age range that we do.
So that's, that's a really important step. And how many people do you have in both of your different act?
Um, so they're capitated by F T Es. So they essentially the state identifies that ACT services should be intense. Their 24 hour service that's expected to serve families seven days a week. So the goal is really diversion from the jail, from the emergency room and homelessness. So the three big ones, like that's their job is to avoid us. And so our adult team serves right around 35. And our youth team. Right now is a little low because of summer and kids going to other family members for the summer. But otherwise was sitting right around kind of that 18 to 20 mark for intense services for families.
Without those programs, we would be picking it up and we wouldn't be able to offer the same intense services that is offered through the act. Commissioner Anderson, not only are we meeting at our level. Our law enforcement practitioners and providers are meeting at, at the ground level as well. Or the, the, that's the supervisory level at that, that base. So I mean, it's multiple times a month that people are meeting.
All right. Thank you very much. Actually, thanks for coming and thanks to Sanford's part in the collaboration. Appreciate it. Thank you.
And I'd just like to say thank you for taking interest, for asking for this presentation. And being interested in, in what happens with these, with our most challenged individuals.
Thank you very much. Next up, Health and Human Services State Lead Agency Changes. Ann?
Good afternoon, commissioners. Really proud of the work we're doing in mental health. I'm so happy we were here to talk with you about it. So I'm going to speed through mine. We have some changes on the horizon that are going to affect not just Beltrami County, but all of the counties across the state of Minnesota. So we are unique and I've mentioned this in other presentations in Minnesota in that we're a state supervised, county administered system. And so what does that mean? It means we have state lead agencies that provide us with significant funding. They provide us with our policies and processes and they provide us with oversight, reporting and auditing. And right now we have two of those lead agencies that oversee Beltrami County Health and Human Services and the way that we are organized. So. we currently have DHS, Minnesota Department of Human Services, and we also have the Department of Health, MDH. And so MDH oversees our public health area of health and human services and DHS oversees our economic assistance and social services. Well, what's changing? So in two thousand and twenty-three, there was legislation that was passed that established the Department of Children, Youth and Families, or DCYF, as well as Direct Care and Treatment, or DCT, as their own state agencies. So DCT is what, um, Sheriff Riggs was just referencing when he was talking about places like Noka Metro Regional Treatment Center, St. Peter. Um, Direct Care and Treatment is the, the currently a division of DHS that operates those direct care service provisions. Um, so they are going to become their own state agency here soon. And both of these new agencies are going to have their own oversight and their own processes. So we're transitioning from two to four lead agencies overseeing Health and Human Services. So we'll have DHS, Department of Health, Department of Children, Youth and Families, and Direct Care and Treatment. So why is this happening? Well, we have long heard of criticisms to DHS for how large of an agency it is and how can this gigantic state agency oversee as many programs as they do. And they, they had over, they have over seven thousand employees and they have a multitude of programs underneath DHS. Um, so it is a way to break apart that large state agency into smaller agencies. It also is going to allow a focus on youth, family wellbeing, early childhood, and hopefully more work around preventative services for families through DCYF. Direct Care and Treatment is really a direct service, so it's, it should be operated more like a hospital, not a state agency. And it currently has had to work like a state agency under a commissioner. Um, in the future, it will not be under commissioner, it will be under a board, much like hospitals. Um, so just a change in the way their organizational structure will be operated. Side note, DHS will continue to be the largest state agency by budget. So the other thing is that DCYF is going to pull programs from existing state agencies. So DCYF is going to have specific programs coming out of DHS, MDH, Department of Ed, and the Department of Public Safety. And so I did include in your board packet a printout, um, from DCYF that says everything that's anticipated to move into that new state agency. It's also going to allow both of the new state agencies to have specific, um, advocacy with our state leadership, both the executive branch and the legislature. Um, so that allows that specific focus when they're advocating for funding streams and things like that. So when is it happening? Soon. DCYF is going to be their own state agency as of July one of two thousand and twenty-four. Um, a commissioner has been named by the governor. Uh, Tiki Brown is going to be the commissioner of DCYF. Tiki Brown has a long history working in DHS. I've worked directly with her, as have many of the people in our Health and Human Services. So we're excited to be working with her as the commissioner of DCYF. And then Direct Care and Treat will, will become its own state agency as of July one of two thousand and twenty-five. And again, under that board leadership model. So how does this affect us? How does this affect local Health and Human Services operations? So funding processes, very important for Health and Human Services operation. We have a thirty-four million dollar budget. Two-thirds of that budget comes from state and federal funding sources. So we spend a significant amount of time doing contracting and reporting for our state lead agencies to access those funds. We don't really know what that contracting is going to look like under the new agencies. Um, we can make some assumptions that it might be similar, but of course the new agencies will have their own decision-making power as to what those contracts look like and what the reporting requirements look like to access the funds. So a very important thing, we've been assured, um, that the cost sharing formulas and percentages will not change within the first year. So we have a co- county cost share, um, requirement for a number of things that we operate in Health and Human Services. One example is computer systems, technology with a county cost share percentage. They've said, oh, those will stay the same for the first year. Now, to be fair, cost share is up. You know, anytime there's a legislative session, those cost shares could be changed, but we have that assurance for one year it won't be. Um, but with the reporting requirements, I would anticipate we will see changes in the future as the new agencies evolve and follow. Um, performance management, um, and auditing are part of the oversight procedures that our lead agencies provide to us. They ensure that we're following legislation and policy. Uh, we, we do have a performance management division of DHS. There has been no decision where the performance management division will continue to be housed. Um, it does uh, assess performance between multiple state, well, what will be multiple state agencies. So the performance measures that they're looking at would be applicable to programs under DHS, DCYF, and Direct Care and Treatment. So we'll see where that's housed in the future. Auditing may continue to look similar. It may look a little bit differently under the new agencies. We have not been audited by these new agencies yet. So again, you know, a lot of unknowns here for the future. We also are going to have to spend some time developing our communication channels. We have worked with people from DHS for many years and a lot of times we know them. We have their direct phone numbers, or if they leave, we know who else is in their division that we can call. We're going to have to spend time, uh, creating those relationships and understanding how to communicate best and most efficiently with these new agencies. Um, so this is something that we are very committed to in the future. As Jeff mentioned, we are very collaborative. I think that's how we are successful in the work we do. Um, and we will do that with our lead agencies as well. And then our organizational structure is something that I have been thinking a lot about as we see these changes coming to, down towards us. Right now we have in Health and Human Services, three divisions. And like I mentioned, we have public health, their lead agency is MDH. We have social services and economic assistance, their lead agency is DHS. In the future, that is not going to be so clear cut. So in the future, we're going to have public health with a lead agency of MDH and DCYF. We'll have social services that will have a lead agency of DHS, DCYF, and Direct Care and Treatment. And economic assistance will have DHS and DCYF. So we really want to be considerate of how the lead agency changes affect our local organizational structure. Um, perhaps it won't change it as much as I think, but we have some of our units that have a team that will have different lead agency oversight even within their team. So, um, as this evolves and we learn more, I don't think it would be, um, out, out of the question for us to be coming to talk to you at the board level about what Health and Human Services organizational structure looks like. We're pretty flexible and we want to respond as this, as these changes come to us. Collaboration, I'm a fan. Um, we have had a lot of collaboration from DCYF. They have been interacting with counties. They have been meeting with us at max a level. They have been emailing. They have that website. Um, so they are sharing with us as much as they possibly can about these changes and we've appreciated that a lot. DCT has met with us at the max a level one time. Um, so we are getting a lot of collaboration even through DHS as these agencies, um, are developed and we appreciate that. I think there's been a commitment to the counties from the state to continue that throughout this process. Final takeaway is for the board, as I mentioned, there's a lot of unknowns. Um, perhaps there won't be, um, as many changes I, as I, as I anticipate. But currently Health and Human Services works with two lead agencies. And those two lead agencies are vastly different in the way that they do contracting, reporting, auditing, um, funding, grants. And so I do think that it would be wise to be prepared for changes, um, as we move through this. We want to be flexible. We want to adjust our processes. And like I said, consider those organizational changes for efficiency as we move forward. So with that, does the board have any questions for me?
Actually, Ann, I had a question.
Yes.
Given the fact that counties are the service arm of the state mandated services, is there any possibility that the state could have maybe delivered some more money to the counties to deliver these services instead of expanding their bureaucracy?
I think that would have been a wonderful thing for consideration during the twenty twenty-three or twenty-four legislative session.
Just my take. With that, no other questions? Thanks, Ann. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up, new jail food services vendors. Is that you, Jared, or Calandra? Who's got that?
Um, hi Commissioners. It's still raining outside, just FYI. Uh, pretty much straightforward. Um, I am asking if you guys would agree and approve a new food service vendor. Um, at this point in time, our process was we had five that were interested, three that applied, two we invited to the interview process, one we accepted. We're very excited about them. Um, the ones that we've accepted, uh, all of our same kitchen staff will stay there. Um, chloric intake will increase, which I'm very excited for. And it's the small things and the small wins. Um, they don't, uh, they don't count the, um, what is the, the condiments as calories, believe it or not, which again, there's small successes, but you believe me, if I don't like ketchup and you do, you get more calories. But this way it's not counted. So that's, that's it. I don't have anything else. I hope so. Oh, my goodness. I try.
For Calandra on that?
Oh, Mr. Chair, thank you. Um, that's, I was going to ask if we, if we were going to be, uh, receiving some calls from inmates in regards to uh, the food services. So.
Yeah.
You know?
I hope not. I hope not. Truly, um, it is very attractive just with the menus. I went through them. Um, I've been going through the, a weekly meeting with them for the last, I believe about four weeks now. Um, it looks very, very good, uh, looks quality. And, and again, I think with any change, there's going to be some kind of complaints. But with the calories, like I said, I'm very excited because it's, and also there's going to be some extra added bonuses, some privileges, possibly pizzas or something like that, that can be added in there in the future. But um, also there's a caveat to it if I can get, um, uh, some more inmate workers and who are willing to go through our program, it's called a food safe program. And they could potentially be food safe certified and be released with a certification to work in the food service industry. So this is another huge, huge help with this, uh, vendor. And again, it's going to take time to grow it um, and see what that type of pressure is going to put on our lead cook. And I'm actually very excited to introduce that to the county as well. So.
I did have one question. Um, does this group work with other jails? What, what kind of references would have?
They do the, uh, we are number four across the state and they're trying to get into Minnesota. Um, they're, the closest one is Clay County, which is Morehead, and they really do like them, other than we do inmate workers. And they don't, they just have, uh, food service providers that are there. So um, very excited also that they're, they're happy to continue with our process because we like to give them opportunities to work in the kitchen. So.
I believe this item's on the consent agenda. So if there's any other questions?
Seven I in the consent agenda.
Okay. Thanks, Landra.
Thank you.
Next up, airport self-help fueling system. Kyle, are you taking the lead on this?
Karen's going to start us off.
Okay. Welcome.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for having us. Uh, my name is Karen Weller. I'm the director at the Bemidji Regional Airport, uh, for the authority. Um, basically what we're here to ask the county board tonight is consent to move forward with constructing an self-help aircraft fueling system at the airport. This is really a, a rare and limited time opportunity for us to, uh, get funding for this project. We normally have uh, funding through the FAA, through our airport improvement program. And this is, um, a, a project that wouldn't be eligible under that regular, uh, project. So, but where we can get funding is through the bipartisan infrastructure law or bill that the FAA has a new grant program through. This grant program is available for about, uh, five years. Um, we are constructing a new taxiway under, with that funding and we'd like to use that funding source for this project. It would be at a rate of ninety-five percent for federal, two and a half percent state and then two and a half local. So about eighty-seven hundred dollars on a local level, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the whole project. Um, we do believe that this will become a new revenue stream for the authority, which hopefully after time we would allow us to become more, uh, self-deficient, more uh, self-funded and perhaps keep our low levy the same as the years go on. Aircraft self-fueling is not an unusual project. There are about forty-two systems throughout northern Minnesota, pro- close to ninety-three across the entire state. Uh, the, the photographs that I gave to you, uh, the two top pictures, you see a pilot fueling their own aircraft with, using this system. And the two pictures on the bottom are sample systems. We, the way we have to bid things is it's a performance spec. And so at this point, we do not have and, and like a vendor picked or a certain brand of tank. So these are just samples. The one benefit, the huge benefit that this would have toward, for the airport is it would make fuel for general aviation pilots available on a twenty-four hour a day, seven day a week basis. Uh, that currently does not exist at our airport. Uh, we do have our FBO fixed base operator that does do fueling from trucks and they do have, uh, limited hours. Oh, and there is a callback fee. I, I apologize. The other thing that, um, that I was going to say is we believe that what a self-fueling, um, system can do is it actually takes two steps out of the fuel transfer process and less likely chances of spilling because what happens when it goes to a truck is it comes from a truck into a tank at the airport, goes from the tank into the truck and then the truck into the aircraft. What happens with self-fueling is it, it's delivered to the airport in a truck again, goes into our tank and then it goes directly into the aircraft when the pilot fuels it. So, and Kyle Christensen, our director of operations, will give you some specifics of some of these systems and how they exist.
Hello, thank you. Uh, so I'm sure a big question for most folks when they think of fuel at the airport is if a spill is a possibility. And there are a number of agencies that, uh, look over our shoulders as we operate this thing to make sure that doesn't happen. So I brought with a little visual aid and, uh, I'll talk about, well, first of all, uh, a system that we get would have to be, um, I guess would be regulated by both MPCA and the FAA. And the FAA's version of regulations is basically NFPA for those aren't, that aren't familiar. It's National Fire Protection Agency, I believe. So there's a section of NFPA, uh, which specifically applies to self-service fueling systems at airports. So I have those printed out. We've studied them with, we're comfortable with what they would entail. Um, we've talked through uh, some of the MPCA requirements with the city engineer. I brought this with me today because maybe the simplest, most important safety feature, which is a requirement of both of those that I just talked about is, forgive the morbid name, but it's a dead man switch. So if you picture fueling up at a gas station, you know, you, you pull the switch and there's a lever there, you can lock it into place. Um, this is a typical avgas fueling handle. As you can see, there's no way to lock it into place and really it's not worth your time because the, the amount of time you take to lock it into place, you're pretty much done fueling. So that's one of the many safety features of these types of systems. Um, if there are any more specific questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I'm just wondering, you know, we're the fourth biggest airport in the state and I would assume all the larger airports probably offer self-fueling? I don't know that offhand, or no, they, or the bigger ones don't?
They're actually more prevalent at smaller airports because there's not as many hours of the day that are staffed. So, you know, a lot of the small town airports actually have them.
Okay.
And some of the big airports don't.
Okay. Thank you.
It's like, uh, Rainier, um, giving international calls do not happen.
Okay. So isn't it true that, uh, without a he- a self-help fueling system, that when a pilot is planning a trip to go from Montana to Wisconsin, they might plan along the way to say, heck, I'm going to be coming in about midnight and I know I'm going to need gas somewhere. They're going to look on their map. They're gonna look on their map, on their information for pilots and say, well, I can't stop Bemidji because there's no way I can get gas. So then they either have to plan an overnight stay or go to a different airport. So I guess this is sort of a, a help for our tourism in some ways. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's something we've heard firsthand. I mean, the, basically the key step in somebody making a flight, say, from Montana to Wisconsin is the flight planning. And so you're, you're planning every stop along your way, and that pilot would absolutely look at Bemidji and see, okay, well, I could stop here, but I see they don't have a self-service fuel option. What's the call-out fee gonna be with the, the fixed base operator there? And $200, especially to somebody flying a plane that may only hold 50 gallons or something is, is a big deal. So that's, that's absolutely a factor.
Tim?
Uh, Mr. Chair. So I'm, I'm trying to think, you know, you're talking about this might be a benefit for the community, but like in my travels, I stop at a gas station. I, I fuel up, I don't stop, I don't buy anything, I don't purchase. So can you kinda help me understand how this would be an economic thing for, for the community? Because I, I don't understand, you know, maybe because I'm not on that community. I don't know. I mean, it, I mean, it seems like, well, if people are, pilots are gonna stop, you know, spend the night, I think that would be more beneficial to the community, right? Because they're, they're gonna be, you know, staying in a hotel and things like that. But if they're stopping to refuel, can you, oh, can you understand that?
Yeah, I could maybe answer. So the first, I mean, the direct impact would be to us as the airport, you know, we get the revenue from that fuel. But, I mean, take, for example, somebody flying across the country, maybe. It might be that they decide Bemidji's a good stop to stay the night. So then they would, you know, run into town and get a hotel. It's pretty common that people swing out to an airport and, you know, maybe it's halfway through their trip. They, they come into town, they get something to eat, you know, they run to Walmart, they get some supplies. I don't think it'd be all too uncommon that somebody would go into town and, and spend a few dollars as well as getting fuel.
Mr. Chair, also, it wouldn't be just people coming overnight, Tim. Their longer daylight hours in the summertime and the fixed base operation only, only operates certain hours. So it might still be daylight and a local person might wanna be flying. And they would have a $200 fee if they wanna fuel, fill back up again when they get back to the airport or, or before they take off, you know, if they decide they wanna go for an evening, evening flight. You know, they would have to have a pretty expensive call-out. So it's, I think it's more than just the overnight stuff.
And, and, you know, thanks for that information. And because like I mentioned, I, having been part of the Airport Authority Board, so I mean, I wouldn't know. And I, I imagine, you know, the average citizen, you know, doesn't have a pilot's license and probably wouldn't understand either. So I think, you know, having the, the questions would be helpful. Thanks.
Joe?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have several concerns and questions, mostly environmental, with the low wellheads nearby at the airport and in Echols Township. You know, we've had a, a history of PFOS recently. That hasn't been fun. I think that's still fresh in people's memories. And with all the concerns that were coming from people at the city council meeting last night, city council members, including the mayor, I, I'm just not sure we need another 10,000 gallons of gas next to Grace Lake right now. I could be convinced, but I think having this on our consent agenda is jumping the gun a little bit. It does feel rushed. So I would like to make a request to pull this from the regular meeting consent agenda, and I do have questions.
Very good.
There is no risk, there is no risk mitigation plan for spillage, correct?
At this time, we, we do have a section of our Airport Emergency Plan, which is a, an FAA-required document that addresses hazardous materials incidents. Along with this, this new system, we will develop what's called a Spill Prevention, Control, and Countermeasures Plan. And that was working along with the, the City of Bemidji City Engineer. And that's something that he indicated would need to be in place and approved by him by the time the fuel system is commissioned. So we are currently in the process of developing that plan. I've reviewed the plan of a tenant of ours, the Fixed Base Operator, and I'm comfortable with what's in there. It's got a lot of the same sections as what our emergency plan entails. It's just kinda laid out a little differently. And there are a little bit more formal titles laid in there as far as personal responsibility. Along with that, I've not scheduled yet, but found some training that I would like to personally take on, as well as some members of our staff. So there's a, a fuel supervisor training that needs to be taken before you can accept fuel shipment deliveries. And then there's also some hazardous materials training that we're gonna do as well, so.
And you have these grant funds for the next two years, that's my understanding? That's correct?
That is correct.
Yes.
And if I could add something about the tanks? I just had a conversation with Bemidji Aviation, our Fixed Base Operator this morning. And it is their intention to remove a 12,000 gallon underground tank this summer. So with our 10,000 gallon tank, it really becomes a net loss of 2,000 gallons.
And, Mr. Chair, I, I'm wondering if these folks would be willing to come back to us at a future meeting and present the same information that the city council is asking for?
Is it true that a system like this would not be able to be operational until the MPCA signs off on it? Or you just can put one in?
Uh, in the MPCA, CA's eyes, we have to register it within 30 days of being operational. But working with the city engineer, as I mentioned, that SPCC, it's my understanding that we wouldn't be able to put the tank into service until he approves that plan. And we would register the tank before we put it into service, just to make sure that everything's squared away. And I've also reached out to our FAA inspector that, that comes on site yearly to inspect it in the NFPA's eyes. And I'm gonna set up with him to make sure he approves of everything that's on the system before it's turned on.
You know, if I might, Mr. Karvaco, do you have any experience at other airports that you work with that have a self-help fueling system? Or you could shed any light on this at all, that would you be willing to add any, what, could you come up? I'm sorry.
We're the engineers for the City of Boston Airport, who has a self-help fueling system as well. So we help them manage the system, find the, the correct vendors for maintenance and repair as well. And, and just a point of clarification with some of the stuff, this, this tank is a 10,000 gallon tank that we're looking at above ground that is not required to have a permit from the MPCA until you reach a million gallon tank system. It falls underneath the Minnesota State rules being operated with. No different than I'm sure the County Highway Department has sitting over there, the City Public Works Department. It's the same set of rules that we're operating underneath with this system. Being a, a good neighbor, I mean, we're reaching out to the MPCA proactively, trying to make sure they understand we're doing this. The Minnesota Department of Health has been involved as well. So just trying to be proactive to make sure that it's done appropriately. But this is a very common system done at many airports.
And it's a long way from Grass Lake, a lot further than, than the County Highway Department's fuel tank.
Actually.
Well, it's the same watershed, it's just south of there.
The city meeting last night, the city engineer provided a, the direction of the groundwater flow going northwest to southeast, which is not in the direction of where Grass Lake would be compared to where the system would be sitting. So should there be an incident, it's going in an opposite direction from that lake.
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate that. Any other questions? All right, we will pull that item off the consent agenda. Thank you, and you might wanna hang around for when that comes up on the regular agenda shortly.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ah, yep. Subsurface sewage treatment system. Brent, welcome.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Brent Rude, Director of Environmental Services here. And I thought this would be a good time to give an update. The, the Greater Bemidji Area Joint Planning Board, Northern Township separated ways at the end of last year. And since then, we've been having some conversations with both entities about how they're gonna move forward with permitting and what the county's involvement needs to be or should be with those. And we just reminded them that we're, we're all in this community together. We're here to work together. If you need our assistance with anything, let us know. And what, what they decided, both of them, was that the septic permitting part wasn't something that they were gonna continue to do on their own. So we're already issuing permits for Northern Township. And the city is working through a process right now to change some of their rules that specified how permits were issued and codes, septic codes and things like that for in the city of Bemidji. And so effective, last I heard, was effective roughly the, the last week in June. The city would no longer have an ordinance that would regulate septics on their own, and they'd be deferring that to us. It's a, state statute was set up where counties are responsible to administer and enforce the Minnesota Rules, Chapter 7080 and 7081, the, the septic rules. And if a city or township adopts an ordinance and has staff trained, they can do their own permitting. They're, they're not required to, though. If they choose not to, it defaults to the county. And that's kind of, but we went into this with a partnership, saying, we're all here to help, and how can we make this the best possible scenario? The professional contractors that are, that are really getting these permits are the ones that have said for, for many years that we would rather go do this in one spot if possible. And so that's kind of all coming together. So once that happens, the City of Wilton will be the lone place in Beltrami County that issues their own permits for septics. Otherwise, all the septic permits in the county would be issued through the county. Numbers-wise, I know the Northern Township, there's a, a fair amount of septics activity that happens in the year. I don't recall off the top of my head what the numbers were there. I know they fluctuated pretty greatly. The, the one number that stuck in my head is I think they had about 75 last year or the year before. The City of Bemidji fluctuates up and down greatly. And, but their five-year average is about seven septics in the City of Bemidji a year. So that's a pretty light workload. And the only complicating part really for our department is gonna be that there are certain areas in the city where they don't allow new septic systems to be built because there is city services there, and they want them to hook up to city sewer where that's available and appropriate. So we'll be coordinating a plan on how we're gonna work that together here in the next couple of weeks. We've got a, a doodle poll out right now when we're gonna get together a staff and, and get together and hash out the final details. But just wanted to take that opportunity and kinda bring some, I don't know, closure or update at least to those conversations. We all, you know, kinda heard and talked about the dissolution of the JPB, and they're kinda going on their own. And that's how it's going. They're gonna both continue to permit other things that they were permitting before. We're just taking on the septic part from them and taking that off their workload. So if there's any questions, I'll answer, but it's just a, a short, quick update.
Any questions for Brent?
He answered the one question I had, no one's, what other entities would be doing it? Well, City of Wilton is the only one.
Yeah, they're the only one left, yeah.
Thanks, Brent.
Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate the update.
Ah, we have an award for Deputy Hardy.
Good evening, Commissioners, I'm back. I've got Deputy Hardy with me today. So.
Welcome, Deputy.
Thank you. Glad to be here.
This, this past year, our office contacted Mothers Against Drunk Drivers, MAD, and submitted Deputy Hardy for an award for the Thomas Keating Youth Prevention Award. And we got phone called by their directors in Minnesota stating to us that he had won it in Minnesota. The Thomas Keating Award is designated for those agencies or officers that devote their time to youth prevention with alcohol and/or substance use. Deputy Hardy has been a DARE instructor for three years in the Kellyer and Black Duck School Districts. He has taught hundreds of kids with regards to DARE. And he did receive the award for that. Deputy Hardy has also been a part of our Explorer Program. He started out with that with the City of Bemidji Police Department, COVID happens. And then ultimately, after COVID, he picks up and he and one of the Bemidji officers conduct a, I think it's a, is a combined group now?
Yeah, but combined group. We call it the Northwoods Explorers Post. We had, so we're partnering with the Bemidji Police Department, myself and Officer Corinta. Our, we run the program. We have students, they're in uniforms, they have ranks.
How many kids are there now?
We started the program at 13, but now we're a little bit under that just because, you know, students are moving on, they're graduating, they're getting summer jobs, which we want them to prioritize that over this program, just because it gives, that also gives them life skills. But it's a great program where they learn law enforcement, if it's for them or if it's not for them. You know, I think if, if it's not for them, that's a good thing, too, because it makes, it helps them realize whether they want to go into this profession or not, because it's not for everybody. But it is great that we give these students a chance to see what it's like to be in law enforcement. We have them do things such as report writing. We make them go through scenarios. We have uniform inspection. We have them practice testifying in court. All of that, so they get an idea of, is this really the career that I wanna do?
So with all the things that Deputy Hardy has done for youth education, that was our clear cut for the nomination, and Mothers Against Drunk Drivers awarded him that. Captain Kluzik, myself, and Deputy Hardy attended a banquet ceremony down in Brooklyn Center last Wednesday or Thursday? Thursday.
Thursday.
Sorry, it's been, it's been a week already. But Deputy Hardy was also recognized with about, gosh, there had to have been 100 other cops down there with regards to his number of DWI enforcement. Deputy Hardy placed fifth in the state of Minnesota for DWI enforcement, receiving his gold pin at 111 DWIs from October 2022 to October 2023. One other, one other local area, or two other local area officers, I started to say three. Officer Corinta with the Bemidji Police Department, Officer Jesse Branch with Red Lake Police Department, and Officer Chase Gallenger with the Red Lake Police Department as well. So we had four area law enforcement officers recognized down at the state for their efforts with taking drunk drivers off the road.
Actually, five.
Five?
Jeff, Amy.
Oh, I forgot about Jeff. All right. Does anybody have any questions?
Questions? Thank you very much. Congratulations. It's that time of the day when we get an administrator's update.
It's hard to follow that last presentation, so I'll do my best. Thank you, Commissioners. Couple updates for you. I wanted to update you first on the process and where we're at with the Natural Resources Director position. After a long and successful career, as you know, and 13 years serving as our Director, Dick Moore has announced his retirement effective May 31st. I just wanted to remind you while I'm on that topic that his retirement party will be on that Friday, the 31st, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. And that will be in the Natural Resources Office. Anticipating this, because Dick did give us a long lead time, we have been conducting a hiring process. And for the past six or so weeks, we've gone through this process and wanted to let you know that we have identified and selected Shane Foley to be our next Natural Resources Director. Shane has a bachelor's degree from Bemidji State University with an emphasis in biology. Also has a master's degree in forestry services, or resources, rather, from the University of Arkansas in Monticello. He possesses 20 years of experience in the environmental, forestry, and natural resources fields. He's worked as a lead researcher for the Minnesota DNR, also as an assistant, a research assistant for the University of Arkansas. Was a district manager for the Hubbard Soil and Water Conservation District for several years. Also started his own company and served as the financial officer and project designer for an agricultural consulting company. And for the last eight years, he's worked here at Beltrami County as a environmental resource specialist in the Environmental Services Department. So the plan is for him to be paired up with Dick Moore for the next several weeks until Dick's departure. He'll be job shadowing, learning the position, and all of those sorts of things. At which point, upon Dick's retirement on the 31st, Shane will then take over the position on June the 3rd. We'll introduce him formally to you at a future meeting. I didn't wanna do that too prematurely since Dick's still with us. But I'll bring him in at some point. You can, you can meet him. Next, I wanted to move on and talk to you about some great news that we've received, thanks to the efforts of our highway engineer, Bruce Hasbargen. He's doing a phenomenal job of continuing to identify, capture. Uh, he's doing a phenomenal job of continuing to identify, capture and spend other people's money. So I wanted to give you some good news about a couple of grants that we've recently received. We've received two hundred thousand dollars in federal funding, uh, for the the county's supplemental safety planning project. And that money's gonna go directly into helping us update our county road safety plan. So those are dollars that, you know, are one hundred percent levy dollars that we typically would spend for that type of a project that now we're offset, uh, by having that grant, which is which is very good. Uh, we also received a seven hundred and ten thousand dollar grant, uh, from the Active Transportation Infrastructure Program. This is state funding. And that's going to be used to construct a bike trail from the Jefferson Roundabout all the way out to the high school. Uh, so that's a hundred percent paid for. Um, and then the section that's gonna go from the Jefferson Roundabout into the city is also grant funded that the city has received. So they'll be leading that portion of the project. We'll be leading the Westerly portion of the project. So really great partnership there and great utilization of those grant funds as well. So, uh, we're pretty happy about that. As you know, this week, uh, marked the end of the legislative session for the Minnesota Legislature uh, with, uh, mixed results. I think depending upon your community or your issues or whatnot, we certainly had mixed results at the legislature. I wanted to share a couple of the really good news stories. Um, and a couple of the other updates, just in general regarding the legislative uh, situ- or season. Um, I have invited our lobbyists to come to the next meeting and give you a full-scale presentation on this. So he'll be coming to the June fourth meeting. Uh, that's already been scheduled up. But in 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 advance of that, because I know some of you are kind of curious, since we just wrapped up the session on Monday, I wanted to let you know that, um, uh, of course, you already know some of this, but, uh, maybe for others, uh, watching or or whatnot. Uh, the clarification, uh, for the legislative intent for the general election that we held for the local sales tax that we had, uh, did pass. As you know, that's been moving forward. We're really grateful to the legislature for that. Uh, the chief author of that legislation was Senator Rest. And, uh, that was, uh, for the Senate, and then the House author was a Representative Bliss. So we're really grateful for their, uh, contributions and their leadership in helping to give us that security. Um, on another, uh, bill, we did, uh, as you know, last year, struggle with the Department of Health and Human Servi- or Department of Health and Human Services for the state uh, in regard to some outstanding bills that were extraordinarily high related to the inability for the state to move certain clients to different types of mental facilities. Uh, we had an outstanding bill of about three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars that we contested, uh, with the state. Um, we did negotiate an interim solution to have a payment plan with the state. Uh, but Senator Green, I I just want to thank publicly for his leadership and his tenacity in helping us do a retroactive fix to this particular problem. Uh, and essentially, that bill did pass, and we have now, uh, well, until, I think the ma- the, uh, governor, rather, has to sign it still. But, uh, that bill will absolve the county of that, uh, that cost. And so, uh, we'll put the payment plan aside and and we won't have to pay that. So that's really great news for us as well. Um, and we may, we'll go back and we may have, because there's a little bit of additional room, uh, financially, we may be able to go back and find a couple of other clients that were sort of in the same situation over the same time period that we might be able to also, uh, recoup costs from. So we'll be looking at that as well. Um, just a couple of up other updates, uh, the unsafe ice search and rescue reimbursement, uh, did pass. Uh, this gave, uh, two hundred thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-six for grants up to fifty percent matching uh, to a maximum of five thousand dollars per rescue. Uh, this is, you know, kind of as a result of what we saw this last winter in regards to a lot of these ice rescues and the costs associated with pulling people off ice. Uh, so that that's a bit of good news, um, maybe to offset a little bit of the the costs that we have, but certainly won't offset all of it. Um, on other, uh, news, uh, we did see that the state land conveyance, uh, bill that was brought up um, did not get hearings and and therefore did not pass. That got a lot of the community's attention. Um, there may be additional, um, conversation about that going forward, but we were monitoring that one as well. Um, and then lastly, um, the county did request fifty million dollars of state funding for the bonding bill, to be included in the bonding bill for the jail. And, uh, we were fortunate enough to get both the Senate and the House, uh, teams to come look at our project. Uh, but as you know, uh, bonding bill did not pass this year, so that will not be included. And we'll have to continue to see, um, and and look again at other sources of funding as we go forward. Of course, the jail project is a multi-year project, so, you know, maybe we'll take another stab at that, uh, over the next year as well. Uh, the last thing I had for you, uh, is in regards to important dates, is just the observance of Memorial Day on, uh, Monday, May twenty-seventh. Uh, that means that all county offices and solid waste facilities will be closed. And the Sheriff's Records Office and Court Divisions will also be closed. However, as you are well aware, we'll be keeping twenty-four seven services operational during that time. That's all I have for you, but I'll stand for questions if you have any.
Questions for Tom? Craig?
Yeah. Thanks, Mr. Chair. Just wondering, uh, moving forward, if we encounter a situation like the one that was resolved by Senator Green's assistance, will will we be able to avoid getting more of those happen, you know, situations from arising and not having to to deal with that anymore?
That's an excellent question, Commissioner Gosbig. The the short answer, short-term answer, I should say, is yes, for one more year. Um, last year, the legislature passed a moratorium on that issue, which, uh, allowed for the state to pick up the tab for the issue that we ran into, which is having a client that should have been located in a different state facility but wasn't moved in the required timeframes and was kept at a facility that was like three times as expensive. Um, so there were a number of counties that got stuck in that situation. And, oh, together, w- working with the legislature, we were able to get a two-year moratorium on that, on that, um, cost, if you will. That expires next year. Um, the bill that was passed this year for Beltrami County specifically allowed for retroactivity of that two-year moratorium back an additional year, which resolved the issue for us because our issue happened before that two-year period. So, um, so the short-term answer is yes, we've got it for one more year. I have continued to encourage AMC and others to work on a long-term fix so that that stays in place. Either that or the state's got to build additional mental health infrastructure to get people where they need to go sooner and reduce the cost burden to counties. So hopefully, one of those two things happens. I I think, you know, our best chance is to try to get that, um, extended, the time period extended to the current bill.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Tom? All right, let's look at the agenda coming up for the board meeting. We've already had, uh, item seven B moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda, item ten B. Is there any other?
So I've got item ten A as being the airport self-fueling and item ten B being the Nat- Natural Resource Management, Beltrami Electric Easements.
I'm sorry, you're right.
Um, the easements, uh, uh, I want to move that because I serve on the Beltrami Electric Board, and I don't want to perceive conflict of of interest, so I don't want to have to not vote for the consent agenda. And that's, we'll move it off of that, so I can abstain.
All right, so the airport, uh, self-help fueling will move from seven B consent to item ten A. And then item seven G will move that to item ten B. Anything else anybody wants?
Uh, Mr. Chair, so, um, I guess I had a question about, uh, the consent agenda and, um, kind of a follow-up from our last meeting, um, where there was some discussion and and debate on uh, what can and can be moved from the consent agenda. I'm hoping that maybe I can get some clarity or clarification on how items, um, can are are put on the consent and how items um, are removed from consent and things like that. Because, uh, like I mentioned at the last meeting, in the past, you know, if Commissioners were, you know, had questions or concerns, we were always able to to remove without, uh, debate or or emotion. So is is there any clarification that like, uh, tonight, you know, um, there was this this, uh, airport thing that was on on consent? Who makes that determination, you know, what is placed on consent, what isn't? Uh, to me, it just seems like there's been a lot of changes, you know, in the past year or this year that I'm kind of getting forgetful on on, you know, how how things, uh, operate, so.
Tom, you want to take, uh, the first part of that?
Sure. Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. So the consent agenda is developed and approved by myself. So as the clerk of the board, it's my responsibility to put the agendas together and identify which items will go in which locations. And sometimes I get it right, and sometimes I don't get it right. But, uh, most of the time, um, the philosophy that I use for developing the consent agenda is to put items that we typically think are either routine, meaning they've been approved in the past without issue. Um, they're more miniscule in nature, they're not controversial, they won't require a discussion. Uh, or alternatively, we've scheduled a previous discussion for the work session. And then, uh, we assume that that will be sufficient discussion and then place it on the consent agenda. Now, when that happens, I always urge the department heads to remind the board that after they speak at the work session, that the item is been placed or has been placed on the consent agenda. Uh, the board always has the right to remove items from the consent agenda, and it does not take a motion to do that. Um, your practice in the past longstanding has been if a single commissioner wants to have an item removed from the consent agenda, they should be able to do that. It's actually written in. Um, and I'll just point it to your attention here under number six, Approval of the Consent Agenda. The last statement there is what we have had on every agenda since I've been with the county, and I'm presuming that that has been long before I got here. So that's been your practice. Um, I will tell you, I don't know, I'm not aware of any policies in regard to agenda setting other than the resolutions that we've passed in regards to controversial items that goes before the board. So hopefully, that provides a little bit of context.
It it does. So, I mean, I I guess I was just kind of confused, you know, because there was, uh, uh, Commissioner Gould wanted, you know, have some discussion or had a couple of questions about a few consent agenda items last meeting, and I wasn't yeah, I just kind of wonder why we, why he wasn't allowed that opportunity.
I'll take that one. Okay, so so, Tim, what we want to do is have a process that moves very smoothly. And the way we move that smoothly is anything that needs to come off the consent agenda, because you have a question about it, we do that in the work session. That that's what we're, that's why we're doing that now. Uh, rather than all of a sudden a motion's made to approve the agenda and then, uh, amendments, and and it starts getting real confusing as to what's being approved and not. That's why we want to do, if you want to pull anything off, we pull it off in the work session. And then we move forward that we can move smoothly at the board meeting.
So what what happens if time doesn't allow for that? What happens if time doesn't allow for to have that discussion prior to the regular meeting?
We'll make sure we have time.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, a lot of times, I think, um, if there's an item that you think you might want to take off, you really don't even really have to wait. Just come and see me. Come and see me, um, before the meeting starts and just say, hey, I'm gonna have a problem with seven C. We'll just say, we'll just take it off.
Or me.
Or or Craig, because Craig usually usually the the vice chair usually is doing the motion, so so either Craig or myself, we just say, hey, I'm gonna pull, I mean, you, we don't need to have a formal discussion, but but, you know, we can, but that makes sense?
It it does, you know, and and I like the how, you know, in the past, we were able to, um, you know, move things up to consent, you know, because I think it it, you know, I don't know what, you know, Commissioner Gould's questions were. I don't know if they would have been beneficial for for us to to know or or learn or would have been beneficial for the community or or the the folks that that may watch. So, I mean, I I think we missed an opportunity there, and I would just I dislike missing opportunities, so, um, it's hopeful that.
Just for your information, I did send Commissioner Gould an apology, just so you're aware.
Thank you.
I didn't hear back, though. I think he was still upset. That being said, we with that, the process, I I think will be a good process going forward, and we can go smoothly at the board meetings. And and again, my apologies, Commissioner Gould.
No, I appreciate the text and, you know, um, a lot of times I don't respond, but it was sincerely appreciated, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I think we can move on, so.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Is there anything else anyone has? Then we are adjourned until five o'clock.